At the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Okay, do a roll call.
Here.
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 Here. Okay, we have item E, consent and gender. Now we do a roll call. Now we don't need a roll. Is everybody here? No, we should do a roll call because we have funding items. Okay, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
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 Oh, yes. We're on recognitions. Oh, hang on. That's usually part of the... Is that part of the consent? So we had to recognize... Oh, is Nicolette here? Oh, Telled?
Yep.
Oh, I see. Oh, okay, I missed that. Okay, public comment. A person may address on any item that's on the agenda for a period of two minutes. So any item on the agenda anybody wants to speak about? And by the way, welcome here tonight. Thank you for coming. And I appreciate it. Okay. You should name city residents and item number on the agenda.
Is this a guest? As a guest? Guest speaker?
Yeah. Good evening. My name is Jahira Rodriguez and I am a paraeducator for the Worcester Public Schools. Before coming today, I struggled with the idea if I really wanted to share my story with you all. And the reason is because I feel ashamed sometimes. I have to make a decision between paying my electricity, my car, or my rent. But then I realized that I should not be ashamed. You guys should be ashamed. As a paraeducator, we do not work. We work with the things that you guys don't want to do. We change diapers, we deal with behaviors, we do a lot of other works. This is not only a job, this is our career, and we love our career. I'm also well-educated and very good at my job, just as all the ESPs or paraeducators of Worcester Public School. I ask myself, who will take the challenge in the school committee to live an entire year with less than $40,000? Nobody will. We will have to have two or three jobs to be able to feed our families. I ask, why are you denying us a living wage? And the reality is, I would never have a real answer. I also ask myself, have you realized that if we're not in the classroom, there's a big possibility that the school cannot run without us? And I don't want to hear that you respect us or value us. Because if you do so, you will pay what it should be owed for us. As you all know, education is in a crisis, and we're losing educators. Because at the end of the day, we can make more money going to Walmart or Starbucks. That's to educate the next generation. I hope that after you leave here, you think about the words that I'm sharing with you today. Make a plan. Come back to us with something that is not less than a living wage, to pay us what we deserve and what we are owed. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay. Usually we don't allow that testimony, but it's good to hear, good to see everybody. We love the work you do. You do great work, and no question about that. But usually we do negotiations at the table, and so I get it. And but we are going to move on from public comment. And we are going to go to the public...
There's more public comment if...
On... Okay, the rules of the school committee is items on the agenda. If you have more items on the agenda, you're more than welcome to speak. What item number?
We were planning to address the same issue, and if the negotiations were moving forward, we wouldn't be here speaking with you.
So we can allow... We'll allow two more people for two minutes if you'd like.
Hi, my name is Melinda Martin. I'm a resident of Worcester, also a paraeducator at an elementary school in Worcester. And I just want to reiterate what Jahira did say. Again, in my building, if all the paras in my room did not show up, the room wouldn't run. We have three paraeducators in our room and one gen ed teacher and one teacher. So without us, we'd have kids bolting every direction. We have three kids that bolt. We have one that's four years old versus the rest that are six or seven years old. So we need a one-on-one for that specific four-year-old who's never been in school before. Again, a living wage, it should be a simple thing. And again, excuse me for a second. Our contracts expired on August 31st. We've been negotiating since January. We finally got our first offer from the district on Tuesday. Our first offer in 10 months' time. If that's how negotiations go, we're never going to have a contract, and you are going to continue to lose educators to different districts that do treat their educators and paraeducators with a bit more respect and a bit more of a living wage. If you look at what Malden just settled, it's phenomenal what they did. And they did a one-day strike, and we saw their before offer and we saw the school committee's offer after the strike. They're going from $30,000 to $38,000. $30,000 to $38,000. We know we can't hire people at the steps we have now. People can't afford to live on that. As a single mom, I can't afford to live on what I do. I do have a second job, and I have to balance being a single mom with my child. Please, just negotiate with us and give us the living wage. It shouldn't... No one should have to work two or three jobs to put food on the table, to get heat in the house, to do groceries for your family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Hannah Weinsaft. I am a teacher here at the Worcester Public Schools.
Can you have your name, put your name in for the record?
Yep. My name is Hannah Weinsaft, and I am also a Worcester resident as well as a Worcester Public Schools educator. And as a classroom teacher, I just wanted to voice too that I'm deeply concerned that our student rights are being violated when our IAs, who are incredible and fantastic at what they do at their job, are being pulled to be substitute teachers every single day. The students that are required to get their services aren't getting them. And we're here because we want to work with those students every day. We want to be in the building and we want to do a fabulous job. But it becomes more and more difficult when our hands are being tied. So part of that is making sure that we have a contract that allows people to stay in that job and participate. A young man got hired this year to be an instructional assistant and is already looking for another job because he's realizing he won't be able to live on that wage, and he teaches in the room next door to me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. This will be our last speaker. Let's go ahead.
Hi, my name is Luce Mahia. I'm a paraprofessional at Roosevelt. In my two and a half years as a paraprofessional for Worcester Public Schools, I have felt anxious, overwhelmed, and many times questioned myself on whether or not I want to keep my job. The good has outweighed the bad, but it doesn't mean the employer is the reason for any of the good in my thoughts. It is for sure the reason I contemplate. Allow me to explain. Already starting at a low wage level doesn't fit my needs to care for dependents without helpful resources from the community. I clearly depend on childcare vouchers to keep my job, and every day I ask myself at least once, what outweighs my reason to stay? I've had a situation where I was one of the employees who had to pay back a mistake in the payroll system with no conversation. I was stolen from, in my experience, no communication, and they stole back what I already got taxed for with no regards to how that check would impact my basic needs. This year, I dealt with being placed in a classroom I felt I was underqualified for, like many others who have spoken to. Very different than our initial interview agreement, just another unnecessary battle in the system. I spoke up because I learned the value of speaking for what I felt is right. I was heard, thankfully, but many others have not spoken up. See, the good outweighs the bad because I love what I do. I love what I... who I do it for, and I enjoy being someone's reason for why they have a good morning. As mentioned before, this is my career, and I'm growing into it with a battle that is unnecessary with my employer. I ask myself, why? Why has it taken this long to understand that we are in need of a living wage? How bittersweet would it be to trust my employer the way they put their trust in me to get to work daily at a cost, at my cost and all means? It would be nice to have transparency and be fairly understood. Most importantly, to recognize us by monetary compensation to at least a living wage. Because we are what look away at the employer's bad and look forward to the good and why we stick around. Don't let the bad fog the good because our students deserve better.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out. Much appreciated, and we'll talk to you soon. Okay, so next item, we have public petition to consider communication EAW for approval donation for sick days for two educators.
Hello, good evening.
I'm sorry. Do we have to get into like the personal history of the person, but...
No, 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 I know, I know. So thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Superintendent, and school committee members. I'm here on behalf of two educators, one of whom is a teacher at Burncoe Prep and the other of whom is an instructional assistant, we're calling them paraeducators, at Worcester East Middle. So I first want to say that both of these people have gone through the proper protocols and done their due diligence to go through the sick bank. They became members. They used the sick bank. And unfortunately, that time has run out on them. Both plan to return this school year, but would need some extra time. So we have staff at both buildings that have donated days, and so we come to you to say, would you please recommend or could you please accept this donation of days and allow those to use it? One of them is his last day of sick days is tomorrow. So if we could do something that would help him, that would be just exceptional.
Okay.
I do have another question too, but I wanted to give you that first.
On this?
Yep.
Okay.
I just wanted to know what the committee's... So through the chair, I wanted to know what the committee's opinion was on the use of donated sick days from a member who is going to retire. So while that member...
Yeah, we can have him off the... Out of the meeting discussion on that.
Okay. Well, I tried to and was sent here.
Oh, no, call me.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But this is going to go to Member Clancy's committee, is that right?
Yes. So through the chair, sorry. We're not... This probably won't get on the agenda until November 29th meeting. So I know usually in the past we have said that we would cover the sick days until we can get to that meeting.
Okay.
Could we do that?
Okay, as amended. Okay. Roll call.
Thank you.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. We have a... Consider communication from an educator for approval donation of sick days. Who's that from? So we're going to send that to governance. All those in favor, opposed, or ordered? Is that part of the same one? Yeah, no. Okay. We'll put it to committee if someone shows up. Member Clancy would handle it there. Okay. So we have a report, the superintendent, the primary elementary and secondary education accountability system, Part II. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. So while the team is walking up, again, I want to thank Dr. Morris and Dr. Andrade for this presentation. This is Part II of the Accountability System and the MCAS data results. You will receive a lot of data dig deeper into how our various student groups are doing and by program as well. We try to not overwhelm the committee with the amount of data that we can go deeper into. We actually plan on coming back on another committee meeting, a couple of them actually, to dig even further into additional accountability measures. So tonight, we're going to stay focused on MCAS, and the future we'll come back with graduation rate, chronic absenteeism, and such. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Morris. Thank you.
Through the chair, thank you. So I am pleased to be with you this evening to co-present our Part II MCAS and Accountability Presentation with my colleague, Dr. Andrade. So tonight, we hope that you will, with us, review the MCAS performance by content and subject, learn more about student-specific subgroups, and then become familiar with our path forward for the school year 2023. So a quick review. Last time we met, we shared with you some key takeaways from school year 22, MCAS results. So again, in science, we realized that there was a slight increase in grades five and eight. However, a lower percentage of students met or exceeded in biology and physics. Also, in ELA, our school district did not improve. And in particular, our writing scores were lower than we thought they would be. In fact, they were lower across the state. Also, in mathematics, we were happy. This is a bright spot for us. We did see an increase in grades three through eight. However, again, our math performance was lower than pre-pandemic scores that we had in 2019. So big key takeaways again from school year 22 is that gaps continued to persist for specific populations and subgroups. Writing, as I mentioned a minute ago, is a grave concern in an area of growth for us in ELA. And in terms of math, the one standard that, among others, but the one standard that we were most concerned about was geometry. So we'll talk a little bit more about the results by content and subgroup, and I'm going to turn this piece over to Dr. Andrade.
Thank you, Dr. Morris. So the... We'll be looking at some of the MCAS content. We'll be looking at English Language Arts first. You'll see this overall, and we're going to break it down by the different subgroups. Some of this information we had shared at the last... About a month ago, I guess. So some information might look a little bit similar, but we're going to take a little bit of a deeper dive as well. So the first slides that we're going to look at are our overall ELA results. We've got grades three through eight on the left-hand side, grade 10 on the right. And you notice that it's showing Worcester Public Schools, the Urban School Network, which we're a part of, and then the state results. And as Dr. Morris mentioned, we had hoped to see a bounce back returning to, you know, instruction in person in 2022. However, you'll notice that for us, urban schools in general and the state, there was actually not a bounce back. And in fact, particularly at the grades three through eight, a dip from 21 to 22. So performance was lower, and it was lower across the state, so particularly for grades three through eight. In looking at our English learners, you'll notice that for grades three through eight, again on the left-hand side, that it was pretty much flat. The state dipped down a couple percentage points, but you know, overall relatively low for English learners in terms of their... in terms of English Language Arts, particularly grades three through eight. On the right-hand side for grade 10, you'll notice that there was a bit of an uptick, but at this point, still meeting the same kind of level percentage-wise as the state, but all relatively low. The implications for our grade 10 students who are Ls has to do with the competency determinations and the graduation requirements. So at these low levels, these students would be taking the test multiple times, and there are certainly implications for them in their... in meeting that requirement. Similarly, for our students with disabilities, you know, same, relatively same pattern. You can see that it dipped down 4% in 22. But for the most part, for both grades three through eight, grade 10, things are pretty flat. And patterns, again, similar with the state, and these are relatively low rates. So we're not seeing that bounce back we'd hope to see in 22 for ELA. This slide shows the percentages by racial groups. It also shows for low-income homeless. The district total is at the end, just as a point of comparison. The patterns, again, are the same as we've been discussing. For Hispanic, multiracial, and homeless populations in grades three through eight, you can see that there's a two-point decline. But you know, there's variability across each of the groups. A couple points here and a point there. This slide is... It seemed a little busy at first. This is a cohort view. We were interested in looking at our students who were in grade six this past year. So they tested in 2022 as grade six students. They were in third grade back in 2019, the last time that they took a full MCAS, had a full MCAS administration. And so we were curious to see for the students who had been here back in 2019 as third graders and then had the interruption in instruction due to the pandemic, where they might be as sixth graders. So this is a cohort view. We're looking at students who had scores back in third grade and who had scored in 2019 and who had scores as sixth graders in 2022. This table shows students on the left-hand side how they scored as third graders. And so third graders who had exceeded in 2019, we can look to the right and see that as sixth-grade students, 89% of them were still meeting or exceeding. For those who had been meeting in third grade, which is that second row, if we look to the right, we can see that 61% of them were still meeting or exceeding as sixth-grade students. This is in ELA. For those students who were not meeting expectations as third graders, we can see that 80% of them were still not meeting as sixth graders. This pattern does not play out when we're looking at the 10th-grade cohort, because we looked at a couple of grades. It doesn't play out the same way for math. But you know, given what we just saw for ELA and how things had slipped and not bounced back in 22, particularly for sixth-grade kids who were learning to read, you know, as third graders, had the interruption from the pandemic, you can see that, you know, what we would hope to have and what we would have expected to seen is a lot fewer students not meeting expectations as sixth graders, you know, after having been in that category back in third grade. So this just gives us a sense, and it's a way to look at students over time, where we would expect and hope to see that students who are meeting and exceeding would stay, meeting and exceeding. And as students who might have been either partially meets or not meeting, that they would be moving to a higher achievement level. So as I mentioned, we also looked at 10th grade, again, ELA. So these students in 10th grade were seventh graders back in 2019. Here, a little bit different pattern. You can see that the students who were exceeding in seventh grade, 98% of them were still meeting or exceeding. Those who were meeting in seventh grade, we had 82% of them still meeting or exceeding as 10th graders. And a little bit different from what we just saw, those who are not meeting in seventh grade, 50% of them were still not meeting, but 50% had moved to a higher achievement level. So a pattern that we would, you know, much rather see. So that was for ELA. We're going to shift and look at math now, and we're going to see the same layout in terms of graphics. So we're going to start with the overall, again, three through eight on the left and grade 10 on the right. We've talked about this already, last presentation, this one. We can see that there's a bounce back. It is not to the level of 2019, pre-pandemic, but definitely promising to see this kind of this pattern. Again, for grades three through eight. Grade 10, a little bit different. You know, we still saw a dip there for us, for the urban schools and for the state. But in all, in essence, pretty much flat at grade 10. For our Ls, we can see that there was a slight bounce back for grades three through eight, similar to what we just looked at. Rates are still relatively low, did not get past 2019. This is the same kind of story. We'll see any of the slides here. But grade 10 stayed at the same rates. You can see in comparison to the state that rates for Ls are relatively low. Again, just like for ELA and math, there are implications for our grade 10 students in terms of the competency determination graduation requirements for mathematics. Students with disabilities, slight uptick again, but you know, still at the same level roughly. We're, you know, we're looking at a range of two, four, six here, two to six over the past three administrations. Four to five percent, or three to five percent for grade 10. State, again, similar patterns to what we're seeing here in Worcester, so it's being reflected at the state level. So this slide again shows you the breakdowns by race, by low-income homeless. You'll see that across the board, the pattern is similar. The students bounced back a little bit here in 22, but nobody was exceeding where they had been back in 2019. Patterns for... That's grades three through eight. Grade 10, a little bit different. You can see that certain groups had a little bit of a dip, and others were, you know, a point or two up or down. So similar to what we had looked at for ELA, we looked at these cohorts for mathematics. And so the pattern here, again, is a little bit... It's different from that first slide that we had looked at for reading for grade six. This one is more similar to grade 10 ELA, and you'll see that for both grade six and grade 10 on these math slides. But for the most part, students who were exceeding, still meeting or exceeding as sixth graders. And for those who had not been meeting back in third grade, 40% of them had moved to partially or to meets. 10th-grade students, for those who are exceeding, 100%, were still in those two categories, the highest level. Those who are meeting, 80% were still in the meeting or exceeding levels. And here, we can see that 43% of students had moved from not meeting as seventh graders to being partially or meets as 10th graders. All right, last set of content area is science. This slide, similar to the others, is showing you Worcester, the Urban School Network, and the state. However, for science, you know, only grades five and eight test at the elementary and middle school level. So this breakdown is looking at those grade levels specifically. And you can see that there's a little bit of a bounce back for us in fifth grade by a few points. You know, the USN state also had an increase, all very slight and modest. At the eighth-grade level, we had a little bit of a dip, but you can see that as a state and for the urban schools, it's point, two points, so relatively flat, so not similar to what we saw in math and also not similar to what we were seeing in ELA. This is a little bit more kind of, you know, steady, equal to what we had seen before in 21. At the last presentation, there was a request to see intro to physics and biology in comparison to the state. And so this slide shows you grade 10 overall, and it's also showing you the percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding in physics and bio. We... The state did shift to the next-generation standards in 22, and so this test was measuring students on different standards. Our instruction began to shift in 22. It will continue to shift, and we'll be supported in that shift instructionally in 23. So the expectation is that there will be... There'll be better performance here relative to the state. There is, you know, it's just a transition to these new standards, so that would be the expectation. And you can see from the slide that, you know, we were below the state as a comparison on these two assessments that are new. We also broke this out for science by the different racial groups, by homeless. A little small, but includes students with disabilities and Ls, and then the district total. So that district total is grades five and eight, which is different from what you had seen in the slides before. It was just combined. And on the bottom, you'll see grades nine to 10. There's no prior years, again, because they were using the Lexi test. So it's only showing 22 because that was the first administration of the Next Gen standards. There's a lot of variability across different racial groups in terms of performance in 22 relative to 21. Okay, so we're going to shift a little bit and look at our L students. So we just kind of took a little bit of a deeper dive, looking at ELA, math, and science overall, and looking at it by our different subgroups. Our focus on Ls is going to take us to look at students who had both an MCAS score and an Axis for L score. The Axis for Ls, it's administered in January and February. It's administered statewide, and it's how we look at our L students in terms of their acquisition of the academic English language. And so we, from that... And so we, from that assessment, uh, get a score of, uh, that's called the English, there's a, uh, EPL, the English proficiency level. Uh, so students have English proficiency levels on a scale of one to six. Uh, on the right-hand side, you'll see it's EPL, uh, EPL one, EPL two, those, uh, we combined those in that, uh, student count, uh, three and four, and then English proficiency levels, five and six. This is just to give you a sense of the number of students who had scores both on access and MCAS, uh, and you'll see that most of the students, uh, fall on that three to four range, right? So that's one thousand nine hundred seventy-seven, but in total, we're looking at two thousand nine hundred twenty-eight students who had both scores. Now, on the left-hand side, you'll look at the chart, you'll notice that we have EPL one through six, right? Five and six is combined, uh, because there's not, there weren't as many students, there's only a hundred and one. Uh, we looked at their academic English language, their, their proficiency level, right? From one to six, one being the lowest, six being the highest, and we also looked at their MCAS performance from meeting, exceeding to partially to not. And the story that this slide tells us is that students at lower levels of English language proficiency, uh, tend to, um, not meet expectations on the MCAS. So eighty-nine percent of students who are EPL one were not meeting expectations. Eighty-two percent at level two were not meeting expectations. And as they increase in their, uh, acad, in their proficiency with, uh, with academic English language, we can see that they begin to, this, this student group begins to perform at higher levels on the MCAS. Uh, by grade three, I'm sorry, by EPL three, you can see that there's a sort of tipping point, and at this proficiency level, this is, uh, kind of the sweet spot where students begin to really have enough, uh, kind of mastery of the English language to really access, uh, the content in the exams. Uh, and so you can see that, um, you know, going from eighty-nine to eighty-two, that there's a pretty, uh, steep decline in not meeting to fifty-one, uh, pretty significant. And we see the flip side of that where we see a jump of seventeen to forty-six percent in terms of students who are partially meeting. We begin to see that two percent of students here are meeting and exceeding at this EPL three. And so as EPL goes up, so does performance on the MCAS, right? This is ELA. We see a similar pattern for mathematics. Uh, now there's a slight change here for our students in math. Um, you know, we can see that there's more students who are partially meeting at EPL one, uh, they're, they're, um, you know, with math exam, they're having a little bit more success. Uh, and on the flip side, at levels five and six, there's a higher percentage of students who are still not meeting, so, uh, some students are still struggling with math, but the pattern is the same, where we're noticing that, uh, in terms of students' English proficiency levels, uh, the higher the level, the, uh, more likely they are to be, um, performing partially meets or meeting and exceeding on the MCAS, uh, here in mathematics. So this is a positive correlation. We also took a look at growth. So we looked again, uh, at access, performance, the EPLs relative to growth on the MCAS. Uh, we spoke a little bit about growth last time. Uh, on the left-hand side of that chart, uh, each of the charts, you'll see that it shows you low growth, moderate and a high growth. Uh, these are what are called student growth percentiles. Uh, it's a scale of one to ninety-nine, uh, so each student has a, an SGP. Those who score in the one to thirty-nine range are considered to have low growth, those at forty to sixty have moderate, and those from sixty-one to ninety-nine have high growth. And this is showing you the percentage of students who fall within each of those categories. For both ELA, which is on the left, and math, which is on the right, you'll see that the pattern that we just talked about is playing out here as well. So students at the lower EPL levels, one and two, are less likely to be experiencing, uh, moderate high growth. They're more likely to be having, experiencing low growth. As the students get to EPL three, you see that kind of little, uh, change there, and then transitioning to four and levels five and six, uh, you can see that those students begin to, um, have more moderate and high growth. So pattern is, is the same here for ELA as it is for math and same for achievement overall. So in general, students with lower EPLs, right? These are students who are learning English, they are taking MCAS, we're seeing that they're not having the same success in terms of the achievement levels, they're not, uh, having as much growth, but as they achieve and gain in their mastery of the English language, uh, they then are able to more fully engage with the content on the test, uh, and begin to demonstrate, um, higher levels of achievement. I'm going to hand it back over to Dr. Morse.
Thank you. So I'm going to talk quickly about our path forward and our path forward, obviously we have a tremendous amount of work to do, and we like to think about it as rebounding and beyond. I'd also like to mention, again, I think I said it at our last presentation, that MCAS is one measure, it should not indicate the ability or a measure of a student's, uh, potential knowledge or brilliance. However, we do have a lot of work to do and where all of this work is well underway and all of these bullets are not in order of priority, they're all very, very important. So one thing we aim to do and promise to do is work on providing high-quality teaching and learning to every student every day, ELA, math, science, ESL, special education, everything we do, we're working for quality. The second bullet is we are now underway, um, in an exciting opportunity to adopt a new ELA curriculum, and efforts are well underway to begin to look at different curriculum, um, tools that are out there that may reflect some of the, the tools that we need to help bring our district to that next level. We are also going to be significantly focusing on writing in, across all grades, K to twelve. We are going to have a Worcester Rights Campaign, and we are continuing to work with our Office of Professional Learning and Curriculum to help develop the tools and scaffolds and ideas that schools need so that we can really begin to build competent, skilled writing programming in our schools. Also, under the umbrella of MTSS, which is the big overarching picture for our schools, tier one, tier two, tier three, we aim to provide high-quality core instruction first, and also in tier two and tier three, evidence-based interventions, opportunities for acceleration, and increased SEL supports. All important pieces. Also, we want to ensure that we provide enrichment opportunities. School has to remain and continue to be fun. Also, we plan to work closely with our principals and all of our staff to provide support and feedback, some coaching to our teachers to help ensure that we're able to be all on the same page about what good teaching looks like and how we can all be better as we work for a continuous improvement in all of our schools and in, in all of our capacities. Uh, a big one, we believe, is extremely powerful initiative, is re-envisioning the portrait of a graduate, really looking at future readiness skills, like where do we want to bring our schools so that we can best position and prepare our students for the world that they'll soon inherit? So we're going to take what we have, there's some great beginning work, we're going to revise it, we're going to improve upon it and expand it, include other voices and, and create a collective understanding of the purpose of today's schools and how we can ensure that our kids are ready for that world that awaits them as they walk out the door of high school. And a big important piece, you'll see the heart here is, um, our Wellness Task Force. We act, we really know that our students work best and learn best in schools, in classrooms where they feel loved, cared and supported and understood. And our staff work best in places where kids are understood and their needs as adults are also met. So we're looking to ensure that our schools are happy places to learn, but also all the needs that our sta, our students have are considered, thought of and planned for. So we have some great, uh, initiatives that we're about to be able to, um, discuss at another, at a school committee meeting where we can talk deeply about what we're able to do in this Wellness Task Force. We, we are really looking forward to this big initiative. And as you saw, the, our L and special education, education results weren't what we hoped for, and so we are going to dedicate and, and provide a lot of time to understanding our L programming, our students with disability programming, and provide some intentional, dedicated efforts, district-wide efforts to improve outcomes for our students with disabilities and our multilingual learners. So these are, you can see we're very busy. These are some of the things that we're, are well underway and we're working on today. So what's next? So what, what updates we would like to be able to share with the school committee in the upcoming meetings would be? We want to be able to give you more information regarding some of the specific accountability indicators and how they impact high school success. And specifically, we want to be able to talk about how do we use our programming and our current models to ensure that our high school students have future success? Additionally, we're going to provide an update to the committee on our multilingual and student with disability programs and talk thoroughly with, about our programmatic initiatives in order to address these, these achievement gaps, as we see this as a very serious and most important initiative that we'll undertake this school year. Also, we've, we would love to be able to bring to the committee some of the work we've been able to do with our wellness campaign, with our wellness task force, and some of the new and improved SEL initiatives and efforts that we've been able to bring to the schools this school year. And, um, finally, but certainly not the last thing that we'll be working on, is in the spring, we will have an announcement for the committee regarding the new curriculum that we have adopted after a very thorough, in-depth and, um, collaborative process that includes teachers, includes principals, includes parents, includes other educators so that we're able to fit, find the just right fit for our district, so that we're able to address some of our ELA issues and concerns. So these are some of the things to share with the committee to look forward to in the upcoming meetings.
Nice job. Thank you. Any questions? Member Mailman?
An easy one, I'm sure. The, um, can you remind me who the urban school districts are?
There's several.
Yeah, off the top of my head, uh, what, Brockton, Fall River?
Springfield, Boston? But is it Lowell, Lawrence, Fall River? Yeah, so there's like ten of them?
There's more than ten, I'm going to say. There's probably closer to fifteen.
If you would like to see a list, I'm, you can.
We can get you, we can, we'll bring that list to the committee.
I guess through the chair, maybe to the superintendent, it just, if it's like the gateway city thing, you know, there's a gazillion of them and that doesn't really make sense, that doesn't really match Worcester. So I'm wondering if there's a way we can create our own little cohort to kind of think about who, what matches us. This is probably the group the state tells us, is this correct?
Correct.
Just a thought, but it doesn't seem very matchy to me. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Member Novak?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, um, thank you for the presentation. First, I just want to make sure that I'm, that I'm understanding, um, this correctly, and thank you for giving us the information in terms of sort of following the cohorts because I think that was, that, that's a useful thing to, to have. Um, if I'm understanding it correctly, effectively, at least for this group of students, and we always know we can't generalize because groups of students are different, um, we don't necessarily see a, a move between third and sixth. We do see a move in seventh and, between seventh and tenth. Is that correct through the chair? Is that, is that a fair generalization?
This slide, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
But the, and the accompanying ones, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Um, which is interesting because I know that I've sat here at meetings before that have taught, has talked about how middle school has been this place where we're supposed to be like throwing up our hands in the air and panicking, um, which instead this suggests that actually this, it, that, that there's, the work that's going on there, particularly in that not meeting category, is both valuable and actually happening. Okay, so go middle school, yay. That's not something we get to say a lot, so I want to make sure that we, that we, that it's noted. I, I'm interested in, as I said, um, in seeing some information around, um, the, the impacts and accountability, and I don't want to misframe my interest here. Part of this is, I, I first came to the school committee at exactly the same time as raised to the top, as you would know, Dr. Morse, um, and so was immediately steeped into level four, blah, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And thus, am very acutely aware of how, um, labels, um, turnaround efforts, all of those kinds of things, um, can first of all instill panic in our educators. Um, and I want, as a school committee member, to make sure that I'm well enough informed, uh, to first of all be reassuring as necessary, and also to make sure that we're doing the work we need to here to be supportive. Um, so I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm asking that question, but I'm asking that question, first of all, just so that I am informed when someone comes to me and says, "I've been told that my school is X," that I first of all have any idea what that is, um, and don't immediately dive down, you know, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education website rabbit holes, um, but also then what that actually means from the district perspective, um, and then of course ultimately what it means for the school committee perspective. Um, so as, as that is, um, possible, um, I would be interested. And then finally, and I'm going to ask a very perhaps un-politic question, um, through the chair of the administration, how useful is this to you?
How do what?
How useful is this?
Madam Superintendent?
How useful is MCAS to us?
Well, and in particular, I'm thinking of this year.
So it's very much a baseline for this year. Um, it, I don't think it told us anything that we didn't kind of already know. As an organization, as our classroom teachers and our principals would know, um, it does let us know how we compare to other districts, and again, not something that we didn't already know. So it's definitely used, the intent of it is to say our assumptions accurate with what we know, and indeed, we know that there are discrepancies between how student groups do and that it does not reflect the brilliance that our students have. So we need to keep working on finding ways to demonstrate their knowledge beyond the and MCAS as an organization.
And, and to that end, thank you for saying that. Um, I, I, I can't help but, I, I may even have been laughing as you were talking about, um, the English learner performance. So just to me, through the chair, just please confirm if I'm correct here. If, if I get off a plane and enroll in the Worcester Public Schools, speaking literally no English at all, and happen to do so within a particular window of time, I am still going to be taking the MCAS, through the chair, is that correct?
No.
To whomever knows.
No. Uh, students who are, who have arrived within the first, if it's the first year that they've arrived, they would not. Yeah, they would not be taking the, uh, the ELA. They might, I'm sorry? March first, okay, uh, within March first of the prior year, um, they would not take ELA.
Yep.
Uh, they could take mathematics, but that's a, that's kind of a judgment call at the school level. It's not used for accountability regardless if they're within that March first, first year in the country.
Okay.
So these would be students kind of year two beyond.
Right, and so we're, if you're testing English language arts and you're not speaking English, we expect that perhaps you wouldn't do well. Okay, fair. The mathematics one, and also I will say the science one, is one that has been brought to me more than once, and I know that there have been at least a couple of, um, initial efforts at the state level to say, "If you actually want to know how students are doing in math, you need to make sure that you're not implicitly testing them in English." Um, and among other things, that was brought to me by the dual-language students who would always have this sort of plunge into English side vocabulary every MCAS, um, and I know that that's not the only place that happens. Is that something that the administration is hearing at all and is that something that we potentially should be pursuing through the chair of administration?
Dr. Morse?
Through the chair, yes. So the math test has a lot of reading on it.
Yes.
The science test has a lot of reading on it, and it has math and it has science in it, but without the ability to read and understand, we may, may not be able to fully understand how much math or science knowledge the student has.
Okay. I want to think some more about that, Mr. Chair, but I, it seems to me as if we, I mean, of all of the, we are among the districts that are best able to represent, I mean, sixty percent of our kid, of our students speak a first language other than English. It seems to me that if anyone should be arguing, we're happy to have you test our kids in math, but let's make sure you're actually testing our kids in math. Thank you.
Member Novak? If I can, just through the chair. Um, so one of the, what I also want to point out on both this slide and the other slide that has to do with the language proficiency levels for our students, is that the core of our children who are multilingual learners actually are in that, you know, that level three and four and five, which means instructionally, we can make a really huge difference in their outcomes. And that's what I want us as an organization. And that's what I want us as an organization to really start thinking about and taking the lead as in the state, because the children who are newer to our country, absolutely, they're still acquiring the basic language, the, their ability to demonstrate it in this very linguistically heavy assessment is, is really unfair to them. When they start getting to that level three and level four, it is really about instructional implications. And so how we program our, our offerings to our scholars and what the, um, the classroom experiences on a regular are will make a difference. And when we look at how Massachusetts has been doing overall for language learners, we're not too far off, right? We're kind of similar. I want us to take the lead in that, because I know that we can. So I actually asked the team to present this, to start to paint the picture that we are a very diverse community, we have lots of different languages, and the majority of our children who are multilingual are ready for us to take them to that next level.
Thank you for pointing that out. Right, there's a, once you get to, to level three, there's effectively a fifty-fifty chance that you're, which means removing the needle.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Kamara?
Thank you. So this is probably more of just a comment and might turn into a question. However, I think being new to the school committee, of course, and then of having had a new superintendent come in and make some changes and stuff like that, I'm thinking about if all of this tied to like a theory of change with regards to like looking at the scores and seeing like how, like what, um, what can be said about some of the changes that you've done so far with this data regards to like theory of change moving forward.
Through the chair?
Member Kamara, I want to make sure I'm understanding your question. So of the change that has happened since I've arrived, has any of it been done to impact these outcomes for the future?
For future?
For the future.
What can we, what can we?
Look forward to?
Look forward to.
Yeah. So, um, great question. So let me go through here and take a look. So what I, what was shared, mm, two committees ago, yes, all the priorities, very much, it's, it's all reflected on this slide right here. So we are definitely working on, so the restructuring helps to dig deeper into the academic supports for our students. Putting special education under a, an additional leader, not, not our special education director, but just, um, a different level of oversight will help to dig deeper into what we do for our students with special needs, and also what are we doing prior to, um, to identification, and actually, how can we decrease that pipeline into special ed if need be? So that's one of the pieces, because we know that the more students are in core content, the, the better they'll do academically. Another piece, I'm, I'm, I probably should put my glasses on, because I can't read that far, that is happening, is the calibration amongst our administrators on what class, what feedback teachers deserve to have in order to grow in their ability to, um, to move children academically. And so calibrating around that is going to be really important, so that there's consistency across our district. I've already seen them start working on that. I'm excited to, to see how that plays itself out. The portrait of a graduate and the reimagining of what we want for our future leaders, that is a big piece of what, how then we address the daily classroom instruction. So that will be something that will be moving forward. And I'll say the last piece that I'm very proud of the team in getting started is our teacher advisory committees, that we are committee or council, I don't recall, I know it's a C.
Council.
Teacher Advisory Council, where we're bringing teachers together to help us do exactly what we want to do, which is include people in decisions that impact them, so that the classroom instruction starts to look differently, sound differently, and that the data comes out in a different way. So those are just little small tidbits.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Yes. And I appreciate this presentation. I think the description and all of the information comparing, I think it's, it really allows you to have a more elaborative visual image of what's really going on. And in my image, in my imagination, with regards to our meeting on, what was that meeting? Tuesday? I think one of the things that I was, I'm interested in, and I would probably do an item on that, is to also maybe compare, add in the teachers' absences. It makes sense, I don't know if it does. So this information here that we're getting, I'm just kind of like curious about that. But to another note, I really appreciate the Worcester Rights. Is that what you mentioned? Can you share a little bit about that, if you have more information? I think that's really awesome.
Through the chair. So of course, as you noticed on, I think it was slide two, our writing had decreased quite a bit. And so we have been meeting with our district team, we call it the TLT, Teaching and Learning Team, and put our heads together around what can we do to help our stu, help our schools understand what our students need for writing? So we came up with Worcester Rights, we thought about WU Rights, but what we're going to be doing is providing some evidence-based practices, some research, some ideas about ways schools can increase writing and make sure that we, um, identify all the different genres of writing. We're just not going to focus on expository writing. And then we got very excited, because then we started to think about celebrations of writing and student writing demonstrations, and we talked about, we have It's Lit, which is a writing book that we put together with all the writing at the end of the year, but we were thinking really big. So we're thinking about student presentations, we're thinking about, oh, I can't remember the word, what, Dr. Menares, what, what is it we're doing?
Spoken word?
The spoken word. I, I was gonna say one word. But we're, we have a lot of really exciting ideas. So we just, we wanted to be grounded in research, we wanted to be grounded in good practice for schools, but we also want to make, light a fire under our kids and get them writing, because we think that's such a critical piece to communication as they work through school and as they begin to find their voice and share their ideas, so.
I think that's fantastic. It, it appeals, It's Lit, to millennials or Gen Z's, wherever we're educating now. And this just kind of like ties me back to, as we look at all of the curriculum and some of, some of the thoughts that have come to my mind, because I remember when I was in the public schools not too long ago, and I shared the story and then sit down, really, was a biology teacher found really innovative ways to educate his students by using technology. And I remember sitting in the, in the class, in biology class in South High, being very intrigued by the different ways in which he used technology and also content level to really engage students. And it's now several years out, but I think I'm really appreciative of some of the innovative things we're thinking about here in different topics, in math and science, and, and writing and English, because all of these are very important, and I commend the administration, and I look forward to reading more and listening more in terms of what we're going to be doing to really move our district forward in these areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, member Klein?
Thank you. So through the chair, I just actually have a really quick question. In terms of the writing portion of the ELA exam, um, when the seventh graders took it, we saw the dip between seventh and tenth graders. Was the, was it paper-based when they were in seventh grade, or was it computer-based at that point?
Computer-based back in 2019.
It was computer-based back when they were in seventh grade? Okay, okay. I just couldn't keep the dates when we switched over from paper-based to computer-based. Thank you.
Okay. So the motion would be to accept and to file. Those in favor, approach to audit. Standing Committee on Financial Operations met Thursday, October 12th at 5:00 PM in the Jerk Administration Building. Member Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Standing Committee on Finance Operations met on Wednesday, October 12th at 5:02. Present at the call to order were myself and Member Mailman, representing the administration, were Mr. Allen, Ms. Consalvo, Mr. Bedard, Mr. Freeman, Mr. Hennessy, and Dr. Freel. We did also have Mr. Hunt there, Mr. Johnson. The, um, the, we opened by considering the annual audit and agreed upon procedures. We took that together with the item regarding student activity accounts. Mr. Hunt, who is a, an annual event, more or less, with the school, with, with finance operations, presented the findings. For my colleagues who haven't seen this before, this is the review that happens effectively for anything over $750,000 in federal grants. We effectively are audited as part of the municipality, and in the review, there were no findings, so the item was filed. We then took two items together, the grant expenditures from September of 2021, and then the, um, the item that was sort of still lingering in terms of the two-mile radius, simply because we actually have been having that conversation ongoingly within the general transportation item. And so on a roll call of two zero, those items were filed. GB two dash two-three, which is the, considering a pilot provision of menstrual supplies at all secondary schools, as my colleagues may recall, we had received an initial communication that there was such a provision, but we wanted to actually talk a little bit more about how that was working. Dr. McGovern plans to speak with us about that, but was not able to be at the meeting. What we did have a brief discussion about was that there's limited access to bathrooms in the secondary schools. A significant number of them remain locked during the school day, and our request to administration was that, um, they work on provision being made such that that was, that would no longer be the case. Obviously, that's related, although it's a larger overarching issue. And then we held the item for discussion at our next meeting. GB two dash nine-two, which is the quarterly update on maintenance and other work that's going on in the district. I do want to commend to my colleagues the backup that we're getting on this. Mr. Bedard's not only giving us a verb, a written update, but also is giving us photos. So, you know, please make sure when that, when that report backup comes through that you look at it. We are, of course, continuing to have staffing sort of tensions, tight, tightness in terms of custodial and maintenance, not uncommon, actually common with, with most districts across the country. We did also get an update on the maintenance services and the environmental work, and then the list of work that's going on at, at the school districts. I do want to highlight for my colleagues, in particular, I'm sure that you will continue to see updates around Burncoat High School because of the NEAS report. So in addition to things that we already knew were going on there, like the conversation about the bleachers and that sort of thing, we do also have this question that's going on there in terms of the building itself. And even if we broke ground tomorrow, Mr. Chair, we still would be several years out of New Burncoat, we know that. So there's work that, there will be work that we will need to do there. And also, I want to note for my colleagues that though we get a capital budget every year within our budget that we passed in June, Mr. Bedard did remind us that that's the plan, and then we have things like boilers break, and we're not going to not fix boilers or replace boilers, and we have had several. So there were fire alarms, there's a fire alarm system that's going in, but there's also a number of boilers that have gone in, just realize that that evolving question is actually happening as well. The ionization equipment and the MRF-13 work, the, the things that already had been installed are continuing to run in schools. So I had asked that question, because I think it's important for us to know as part of the COVID conversation, but also we're heading into flu season. And then in terms of the other work, which you, my colleagues may recall is happening as part of the ESER funding, um, we did, we effectively have had, there's sort of two, two rounds of things happening. Honeywell is doing their final field work, the architect that looked at sort of the yellow range of schools in terms of could we upgrade the filters and that sort of thing, those are, those are moving, continuing to move forward. And note that because it's capital work, it has to be approved by the department, we have gotten preliminary approval, but once that is, the final plans come through, we'll have to get a final one. And that was aligned with ESER III spending, which we do have through September of 2024 to spend. I did ask, I just want to make sure that I'm clear here in the minutes, if we should be asking for an, for advocating for an extension to ESER III spending, the minutes say ESER I. ESER I's already, we're done, so we, we missed that one. We didn't need to, because we already had completed it. But the question of timeline in terms of whether or not we should be part of the advocacy for an extension of commitment is something that we kind of will need to keep, keep an eye on, really, again, because of pandemic supply lines and the same thing, again, that everyone is hearing. We, and effectively, there was a question around whether we should be looking at language to move forward with that. That will be held for the next quarterly update. In terms of the FY23 budget, this is the first quarter report, and the first quarter report is always the first opening of where are we going and what are the trends? We, of course, have a couple of things that are happening at once, which have budgetary impacts. The, what, first, of course, is we brought transportation in-house and learned, to my surprise anyway, that DESI considers bus insurance to be a net school spending eligible expense. So we, the, the first thing that's on here, don't be alarmed that money was already there, it just got moved. Okay, I, anyway. And then in terms of the transportation line, as my colleagues are aware, holdups in terms of us getting the new buses means that we've been renting buses, that's actually what's going on with the, the money that's, that's there. Also, the contracted, um, language around fuel, we, we do actually have a higher amount coming in than what the city locked in a year ago. We also, of course, have a new superintendent who came in in July, which means that administrative changes that usually might come to us through a budget, did not come to us through a budget, of course, they're coming to us as we go here. So the changes that are happening there are being reflected in quarterly reports rather than being reflected as it usually would through the budget process. We did have a brief conversation, and, um, Mr. Chair, I want to particularly note this for you, because you were part of this fight, about the Student Opportunity Act increases in spending. So, um, as some of my colleagues may recall, and, and some of us were steeped too heavily perhaps in this, um, one of the arguments we made to the state was that we were underspending in particular categories because of special education and health insurance being as high as they were, and that meant that we were short hundreds of teachers. It also meant, though, that we were short in a lot of other accounts. And so Mr. Allen shared with us that, you know, operation maintenance, if spending at fifty, fifty-eight percent, supplies and equipment, fifty percent. We should remember, we should recall that, we should note that at this point, we're spending at about three-quarters for both administration and for instructional leadership. Instructional leadership is administration at the school level. And for administration, remember that that account, when we report it to the state, is reporting not only Worcester Public School administration, but the city-side spending that effectively happens on our behalf, and that's actually more than half of that. So as we're continuing to have this, this, this increase come through, we did have a conversation, Vice Chair Kamara and Member Mailman, about that being part of the report that we get. We talked about it in terms of the initial presentation around FY24, but of course, we'll have a new governor coming in, so, um, perhaps as part of the second quarter. But I do think that that's something for us to continue to keep an eye on. Mr. Allen, of course, noted that the district has the lowest spending on administrative positions compared to peer communities, and the second lowest spending compared to peer committees, on, communities on instructional leadership. I will save the transfers until the end, we did actually pass the transfers on a roll call. We did also get the monthly update on transportation, and so note that the, we do continue to have bus drivers in training, and I know that we're all waiting for those, them to come on. Of course, our trainers are putting out fires, so we, you know, they're, they're operating on multiple levels. Note that we continue to be short of the budgeted positions, but again, recall that the budgeted positions were always designed to actually allow for there to be, um, carry over and filling in for absences and so forth. There also continues to be, if you look at the bottom of that page, continues to be transition between the number of buses that are leased and the number of buses that are owned. I'm told that another, another ten of the leased buses went back this weekend, but the number that were running on the road, and I know I'm noticing it even out and about, that are actually the new buses, are, are happening. We did get an update as well on the electric school buses, because something new has happened. It, we had not initially seemed to be eligible for some of the federal grants, it now looks as if we might possibly be. And so as we're continuing to explore that, we, of course, didn't have any diesel buses to turn in, it looks like we might be able to turn in gasoline ones instead, and if that's the case, if that opens, the intent of the administration is to move forward with an application of up to fifteen electric buses. We had, of course, authorized the leash around propane, and so that sort of conversation around what, what are we going to move forward with and will we simply? and will we simply buy out the thirteen is sort of, is effectively related to that federal funding question. Do note that because we're provide, we're able to provide the transportation for WEDF field trips, we're saving WEDF forty thousand dollars on their transportation for those during the day ones. My understanding is that transportation has effectively been inundated with requests for, for transportation. Good news for us, but we may need to steep, may need to keep hiring drivers. And then finally, and I want to make sure I put this in the report, because I know it's something that parents are running into. We are running into with the new buses, some compatibility issues between the fact that we're running iPads on the buses for the routes and the buses themselves having GPS. And in some cases, they're effectively clashing or overriding. They're continuing to work on it. It's actually something that Tyler Technologies hasn't seen before. We think that maybe because they haven't had new buses running with iPads before, so we're cutting edge and we're kind of having to just figure it out. They're going to plan in, plan on coming in to work with us on that to see if we can actually work it out. But for, for parents and families who might be frustrated, that's the story. In terms of the quarterly transfers, we are making a motion, the report from Finance and Operations is, to move five hundred thousand dollars from custodial salaries to building utilities, to move four hundred thousand dollars from maintenance service salaries to building utilities, to move five hundred thousand dollars from transportation salaries to transportation, to move five hundred thousand dollars from transportation salaries to transportation overtime salaries, and to move six hundred and fifty thousand dollars from health insurance to miscellaneous educational ON. And that completes the report, Mr. Chair. If we could have a roll call on the transfers, please.
Okay, so we are going to accept the report. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. We have the six, one, two, three, four, six transfers. Did I get six? I got five, four, six fifty-five. I thought there was one in between. Get that wrong, it's five? Okay. There is five, that's why I wrote down. Okay, five transfers, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. We are on student advisory. If students want to introduce themselves and what school you're from.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm Kendra Neiman, I'm from Worcester Technical High School.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Mia Haines, and I'm from Burncoat High School.
Mia, welcome.
Hi, my name is Alicia Young, and I'm from University Park Campus School.
Welcome. This is time for anybody who wants to speak, you're more than welcome. When they, during the meeting, you raise your hand if you have any questions. Mia?
One of the biggest things Burncoat has been known for, aside from our arts, is our school pride. We've packed our gym for pep rallies, for volleyball games, and for basketball games. In 2019, it was stated that Burncoat High School would be given new bleachers. In the spring of 2020, just before the pandemic began and schools shut down, our bleachers were removed, leaving three rows of bleachers as opposed to the eight that we had before. Our gym remains this way still today. When our New England Champion Dance Team was asked to host the state tournament for dance last winter, they had to host it at Worcester Tech instead of Burncoat due, due to a lack of space and seating. When our girls' basketball team qualified for the state playoffs last winter and earned a position in which we were to host a game, we had to host it at Worcester Tech due to a lack of seating. Throughout this time, we know a plan has been in place to replace our bleachers, but at a recent school committee meeting, we learned that specification development for our bleachers is underway and will be bid upon completion. Assuming that there was a plan for replacing them three years ago when they were originally removed, what exactly does this mean going forward?
Do we have an update on the bleachers, or is it still in process?
To the chair, we, what we'll do is provide a project timeframe in the next quarterly report we give through facilities. As you can see, Mr. Foley is sitting right behind me, so I hear every day about the status of the bleachers, so clearly a priority.
Okay. He got out. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Appreciate it. Anybody else? No, we're good? Okay. You can raise your hand anytime. Oh, you got a question? Alicia?
Um, I was just gonna present, what I was gonna say?
Sure.
Okay, okay. So I'm from University Park Campus School, and my school has massive strengths and successes. And we are notably the most diverse school in the district and the number one when it comes to standardized testing. However, our building is not a suitable environment, and we have had numerous issues in the past and the present that need attention. As our ESL students' classrooms flooded last spring, so now they have to...
Could you talk right into the microphone if you don't mind? There you go.
Okay, I'm sorry. So our ESL students' classroom flooded last spring, so now they have to go to the classroom across the street in the Goddard Elementary School in order to get an education that they need, because it cannot be given to them in our school environment. Teachers in my school rotate from classroom to classroom in order to teach, because they don't have classrooms of their own. Us as students in my high, I'm a high school senior, and as we move up grade-wise, our lockers get smaller and smaller, allowing for us to have to carry our heavy textbooks in our bag, just because we don't have resources like at all in our school. And I think that needs urgent attention, because we've been struggling for such a long time, because we have to be alongside by Clark and Goddard Elementary School, and we see that Doherty is getting funded, they're getting a new building, Burncoat's supposed to be next, but our school struggles because we're small. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Put that in the quarterly report. Good job, Alicia. Thank you. The man's a great, the school's facilities, so. What's that? Yeah. Okay. Here you are, then, Claire. So, thank you. Okay, we are going to, what's that? Okay, we have approval of grants and other finance items on two dash two-seven-six. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. We have two dash two-seven-seven to accept the Early College Support Grant, Fund Code four sixty for the Massachusetts Department Elementary School and Education, an amount of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. This is the motion to accept and to file. Ms. Novick?
Mr. Chair, can we take this with two dash two-eight-one, which is the description for the director of early college, which is actually funded by the grant? Please.
Consider approve the job description of the early, of early college, two dash two-eight-one.
Thank you. So through the chair to administration, I, I have to say that I'm dubious about this for a couple of reasons. The first is that I, I applaud the idea here, which the, the initial notion behind, or the notion behind early college is that getting early exposure to college for traditionally underserved students, long-term, increases the likelihood that they'll both attend college and actually persist there. What I'm not seeing both here, and I appreciate the report that was at TLSS earlier this week, I wish we had the, the report here, but what I'm not seeing both locally and also at the state level is that group of students actually being served by early college. And instead, it seems clear to me that what has been happening with early college is that it is becoming, it has become an answer to what we know, again, going back to the foundation budget, was effectively understaffing at the secondary school. We have a, we have a lack of options at the secondary school, and we have juniors and seniors who literally are running out of classes to take by the time they get there. And now the answer is, oh, well, you can just enroll in early college, you can just take English one-on-one, you can just take, and I, I, first of all, I, I don't, that isn't actually what it's supposed to be about. But secondly, that also isn't really the answer for the secondary school thing. And also, the other reason that I'm uncomfortable with this is we have said for a significant number of years that grants that come before the committee have to effectively either we spend it and whatever it is goes away, or we have a long-term budget. And there isn't one here, and that is what it is. I would imagine that the answer is going to be that it's going to be put into the Student Opportunity Act. And I, I partly also kind of want to put a marker down that I'm, I'm feeling frustrated two years in, because it feels as if we're pre-spending SOA in many ways without actually ever doing the gauge of, is this actually what we really wanted to do with the additional money? So I guess my first question to administration is, and the reason I wanted to take it with the position, we can, we can hold the larger SOA conversation for when we actually have those larger budget conversations. But is the administration effectively sort of shaping the use of this grant to deal with the fact that the early college program doesn't appear locally to be reaching the students that it actually is intended for? Through the chair.
Ma'am Superintendent?
Thank you, Member Novick. So absolutely, when we look at our numbers, we have, there are increases in the number of Latinx students, English learners, African-American, Black students who are attending or participating, but we need to be more intentional about actually tapping children on the shoulder and saying, we really think this would be a good opportunity for you. We want to let you know about it, we'll bring your parents in, we'll let you know what this looks like. So we want this position to create that, those systems by which we are doing that intentionally, that it's not these one-offs, right? And also, working with our guidance counselors to also give them those same tools to do that, as well as the classroom teachers. So it's this combination of this, the, an intentional recruitment effort. Right now, the, it is, it has not been systematized and consistent across the district.
Okay, thank you. And the only other thing that I wanted to just sort of comment on, and I partly say this largely to my colleagues, we should be aware that early college has largely been a bigger administration initiative, it's been kind of one of the two things they spent money on. And we don't yet know, well, first, who's going to be in charge in January, but secondly, what they're actually going to prioritize. And I think we probably should keep that in mind as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Member Kamara, follow, by Member Mailman?
Through the chair, at our discussion at TLSS, we know that the college side of this equation, and having chaired the board at QuinSig fairly recently, we know that the colleges are not being reimbursed to the level. I don't think of, as a, as a brand-new school committee person, I don't think of the work that was done with SOA as, early college is in addition to SOA work, is what I believe. So if somebody were to say to me that early, early college is part of SOA, I would say, no way, get yourself up to SOA, and then we, and then early college is another initiative. And I guess I, I was fortunate to talk to Mary Mead today about this very subject, and, you know, our, our system is about having kids college and career-ready. That's what our job is here, and that's what we've all been working towards. And maybe our guidance jobs are going to evolve, and they're going to change, and that will make us, and that, that the partnership, because they're doing really cool stuff in a lot of other states with early college, and we're not there yet, but the state is not funding us there. So you talked about having a plan to go forward. I, I am fully in favor of moving forward here, but with a big eye on, and what's going to happen next, because, but regardless of what happens next, we probably need this system in place. And I guess that's just a comment, but thank you.
Right, I don't think I have so much. In addition, I think it ties into what Member Novick and Mailman just mentioned about. There is a description on, I believe it was probably the grant description, where we name schools, and then we say, in addition to like the Jerry Kramer, new, new, what is it, Citizen Center, I can't read my own writing, and all that, stuff like that. So I guess my question that we've talked about, structure, we talked about funding, what's going to happen next, my question here is, how are we promoting this program to students at this, at these other schools? And I would probably, probably all the schools. And there was, in one of this, the job description that I, I think we're probably taking with this item, it mentions like community outreach, and I think that, that's been a piece, and other pieces too, that we haven't had in this holistic idea or model. But I just want to, my question is just to talk about how are we going to really engage in these two areas to be able to recruit the students that needs to be in this program?
Ma'am Superintendent?
Through the chair, great question. So first, we'll get the, the person in place, then we'll bring together our guidance counselors to find out what is our current state? How do we actually go about this? Which schools are doing it really well, so we can replicate if indeed we've got some really good practices in place? And then collectively come up with, this is how we will do it as a district. It's really important, I, I would not want to overlook the work of what our guidance councils are doing. I know there are people out there that are doing this, we just need to codify it into one, and then do it similarly, similarly across the district. So first step is get the leadership in place, second step is bring those people together to find out what that, what we are doing, replicate, and, and improve upon.
Okay. I think so the motion would be to accept and file the report, and, and the motion, so those in favor, opposed, so ordered, then we'll take the either item on a roll call. Two dash two-eight-one.
I think, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I, I believe we need to actually approve both on a roll call, because the first one's a grant.
It's the first one a grant, okay.
Two dash two-seven-seven.
Yep, okay. Yep, I misread that. Two dash seven-seven, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Sorry, it's taken collectively, two dash eight-one?
Yes.
Okay. Collectively.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. Response to administration, request the superintendent update to school committee MOU with the Worcester Police Department for school liaison offices and provide updates at subsequent school committee meetings to include plans for the work in MOU. Ma'am Superintendent?
Thank you, through the chair. So had hoped to come back to the committee tonight with a updated MOU in place, ready for you to read and see what the implications are for the district. Have already met with the task force again, and we've had a civil rights lawyer already start to look at the, the MOU that we had brought forward or that we're looking at. The task force, when we met last week, agreed that we really needed to get further clarity as a collective about what we can and cannot do, in, in reference to the, the model MOU for SROs at the state level, and what that means for Worcester Public Schools with the school liaison officer model. And so we have a date set in November. We have asked the executive director of the Center for Juvenile Justice, which I know Member Kamara had recommended to come and speak to us, so that is Leon Smith. He'll be meeting with the task force and helping everyone to come to a common understanding on what we can do and what we cannot do in terms of our relationship with city police, and how that gets codified into an SRO, SLO MOU. So do not have anything to share yet. As soon as I do, I will be bringing it back to the committee. I am hoping that I'll be able to bring something back the second committee meeting in November, and if I don't, I'll come back with a verbal update as well then.
Okay. All set. So the motion is to provide the update and hold, so all those in. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So two things. First of all, I appreciate the superintendent's ongoing work on this, as well as the administration's. I know that this has been a, a long process that she's been sort of plunged into since she joined us. I'm uncomfortable on, on two points. The first is that we're almost a year out, and we don't have any language at all. And I understand that the understanding from council and from the task force was that there was going to be an MOU. I have subsequently learned that that's actually unusual, that most districts that have liaison models simply codify policy internally about their relationship with the police department, because it is an internal school department. because it is an internal school department process and decision. So, I in no way wish to dismiss the work on the M O U. That is something that the community has felt very strongly about, and that is, that is fine. I do wonder, Mr. Chair, if we are getting to a point, however, where we as a committee, considering our own responsibilities legally, to have language for our employees and for our students, if we have a responsibility to start to work on internal policy language, in concert with, not in any way intending any conflict with exterior agreements, but I do think that there is a legal responsibility here that we effectively are not kind of covering by virtue of us not having any language. And so I, I raised the point, I'm not going to make a motion, but I raised the point to sort of open that as a conversation, as a possibility with my colleagues, because I continue to be uncomfortable with the fact that there isn't anything. The second thing is that, and I say this with the greatest of respect for the Citizens for Juvenile Justice, who have been outspoken, and rightly so, on this issue for a number of years. The creation of the model M O U was done in concert with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and with the Attorney General's Office. We all, I think, realize that the Attorney General may have other things on her mind, however, there is an entire office there, and there were people who worked on this. I would respectfully request that we discuss this, discuss, if, if what we are going to do is raise the question of what we can and cannot do, I would respectfully request that we actually go to the state, because ultimately, they are the arbiters. It is, it is not going to be advocates. While advocates will keep us accountable and hold us to account, ultimately, on this sort of thing, we answer to the state. And I know that both Desi Legal and the Attorney General's Office did do work on this. I realize that every time we send you off, we have to have you chasing down various offices, and let me offer whatever help I can give on that. But I do know that there was a very intense conversation that took place that involved those entities, and I would request that if we're gonna go do another round of overhaul, that we consider who we, the, the other entities to whom we, we answer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so next item up is, response to Administration, provide timely reports on the filed racism, sexual harassment, and discrimination complaints from the staff and educators in the district. Any questions on that? Anybody? So the motion is accept and to file?
I'm sorry.
Uh, we are on?
Two, one, one, dash one?
Yeah, yep, two eleven, yes.
Yeah, was I supposed to say something?
Member Kamara?
There's a backup.
Yep.
Yeah.
You want, um, Ma'am Superintendent, wanna give a quick review maybe, or is that the question?
Member Kamara, would you like us, like me to describe this backup that you're, you're looking at?
Yes, please.
Okay, absolutely. So first of all, apologies to the committee, this was not in your, your, your book from the beginning, I think, so you probably didn't even have a chance to look at this. What we are presenting to you is the work that we've been doing thus far on this request to the timely reports. We have been investigating what other districts do at this point, what, and we're, we're finalizing what this can look like with the, with our legal to make sure that what we present to you is, is allowable. So this shows you what we plan on collecting, so we will gather information around the incident, where it's taking place, the, the person, whether it's student, staff. What we will present to you will not be the actual names of the people, right, because that would not be legal. Instead, we will tell you numbers of what we have, what we're collecting on a quarterly basis, and then let you know where we are in terms of the investigation. So this is what we're proposing would be, the report that we'd be bringing forward. We wanna make sure that this is what you are looking for before we develop the system behind it.
What's that?
Thank you to the Chair.
You're more than welcome.
So I, if, all my, my colleagues, I think, can agree, I think this is, this is a start, this is a start. Well, I guess my question is where, or who will be in charge of managing the system, because sometimes it's not only about creating the interface, but who's behind it and the time in which, that we're getting, that we're getting complaints or whatever it is, and then we are either reaching out and solving that and coming back to the community, that's the next part.
Ma'am Superintendent?
Absolutely, through the Chair. That will be managed through our Chief Diversity Officer Office.
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
You're welcome.
Thank you, so we begin another update, so we can accept and file this. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Response to Administration, request to, request to create a policy governing the use of day-to-day substitutes.
Thank you. So, through the Chair, thank you to the Administration for this policy update. My own, and I'm very happy to see, even though they refer to them as instructional assistants in this policy, that our paraeducators should be the last resort, and I just wanna make sure that if, you know, they are only pulled from a classroom, as it says in the policy, if they're, you know, their student has absence in the classroom, and I just wanna make sure that our school administrations are aware of this policy and that we really focus on making sure that we get substitutes and not pulling from other classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. All set. Those motions accept and to file? Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Response to Administration, request update on the community, Worcester Public Schools and COVID. Ma'am Superintendent, I think we have a report on your desk.
Yes, through the Chair, yes. Everyone should have the most updated numbers, so we're all looking at the same thing this time. So it's, was on your desk, it's got the blue stripes across it. Okay, so I'm going to read it going down by quadrant. So, positive cases from October seventh through October twentieth, starting with Burncoat, the number of students was fifteen, the number of staff was ten, the student attendance was ninety-one point four percent, and staff was ninety point eight percent. Want, just to point out that on the attendance, I don't want us to assume that that's all COVID-related, right, on either one, but just, just want us to look at that. So that's Burncoat. Dougherty, nineteen students positive, nineteen staff members positive, student attendance was ninety-three point two, and staff attendance was eighty-nine point five. In our north quadrant, we had twenty students positive, the staff is seventeen, student attendance is ninety-two, and the staff attendance is ninety-one point one. And finally, in south, nineteen students positive, staff was five, student attendance ninety-two point six percent, staff attendance ninety-one point one percent. District-wide, we had totally, total seventy-three students, and that it's ten less than last time reported, but sixty-one staff, also ten less than last reported. Our student attendance ninety-two point four, and our staff is ninety point six. Our students have better attendance than our staff. Thank you.
Interesting. Thank you. Any questions? We'll hold that for the next update. Those in favor, opposed, so, do we have somebody?
I'm just, I-
Uh, Member Kamara?
I just wanna thank whoever put this together, I think it's like really clear and thorough, when you're looking at it easy on the eyes.
Next item is to consider submitting a request to our state legislative delegation to take up the changing, the fall schedule and the placement of school zone signs and new high school zones, new high, new high schools as appropriate or needed. Member Kamara?
Yes, thank you. So I've gotten some complaints from parents who live in that district that has mentioned that around the areas of a certain public school, I don't know if I can name it, that there's no sign that says, school sign that says that this is a school zone. I did speak with Brian about that, and he did mention some of the reason why, but then he also advised me to create this item, well, help him with the item in terms of the language and where it should go, to, to take this up with the delegation, so that's what we're doing here. And any more advice in terms of how we can actually make this a reality will be key.
Okay, so we'll send that to the, the court and, excuse me, Ms. Halden?
Sure. Can we learn what the policy change is we're asking for, please, through the Chair?
The request was to place school zones near a high school, and state regulation does not allow for school zones to be posted in the ninth through twelve. So it's not a, something the city can do, it has to be changed at the state level.
So this, to, to, if I am understanding correctly, then the state and its regulation requires, only allows school zone signs then K through eight? Is that correct?
Mr. Allen?
Through the Chair, that is our understanding, yes.
Okay. Then can I potentially add something with the agreement of my colleague? It has also come to our attention in the past that Head Start does not allow to have school zone signs. Could we consider that as well? Because I know that if I, I have been through at least four rounds of why we can't have school zone signs on Mill Street, and that's why. So, if, if it is possible to amend, would you be willing to entertain that?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Good. So we're gonna send that to the state delegation as amended? Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Of course, after Administration provided a report, and the number of students currently receiving special education services broken down by categories to include the impact on schools and student performance. Member Johnson?
Yes, to the Chair, thank you very much. Yeah, this is on there, just in regards to, as we're looking forward and after getting this report on the MCAS scores, I think we need to take a deeper look into our special ed services and kind of break it down on, on what's going on, and then how that is, relates to our MCAS scores and how we're moving and working forward with our students in special ed.
Okay, so we'll send that to school and student performance. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. We have, Administration requests the school committee approve the appointments of the following provisional civil service employees, as school nurse effective has shown. We'll prove that on a roll call. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next item is to consider approval of the job description for administrative director of college and career readiness. Anybody questions? Approve on a roll call? Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. Then we have a motion to adjourn. Okay, good meeting. Motion to adjourn, those in favor, opposed, so ordered.
You're more than welcome.